It is now nine AM. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order. May I mean, please, allegiance?
I thought we started out with prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Never. All right, so this morning, we have no vacation. Oh. My apologies, everyone. This morning's a vacation. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce Deacon Jude Yonker. Come to the podium, sir. He is the chaplain for the Grand Travers Metro Services Authority, and has been a friend of mine for over thirty years, so, welcome.
Lot of work with Red Cross and stuff.
We go way back.
Let's just take a moment to quiet our minds and hearts and lift our thoughts and prayers together we pray. Creator God, you praised and hold in high esteem those who serve the needs of others. Look graciously on this county commission, made up of people of various beliefs who work for the good of our community. Prompt them to show genuine respect for all and to strive to eliminate all injustice from our area. Inspire its officers to perform their duties well, and the members to accept their leadership, so that the people will be relieved of social concerns and be better able to pursue their spiritual goal. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gedman, roll call, please.
Certainly. Andrews?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Henshaw?
I'm here.
McAllister? Morris?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Approve all the minutes, please.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Commissioner Henshaw, second by Commissioner Walter, approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. First public comment, Mr. Gedman.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name, township or district is not recommended, uh, excuse me, township or district, but providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government as determined by the chair. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chair shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chair may at his discretion allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment we solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public topic, the chair will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chair. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you, Mr. Gedman. Anybody willing to speak at this time, please just go up to the podium, use the microphone.
Bruce Moore, East Bay Township in Commissioner Henshaw's district. In reviewing the materials on the Antrim County Drain Commissioner proposal and with respect to the Elk Rapids Dam, I encourage the commission to postpone any action on this item. I go to a lot of public meetings, and this is the first that, thing that I have heard about the issues described in this portion of the packet. And I think this needs a whole lot more study than you're going to be able to do in a meeting today. In reviewing the Antrim County Drain Commissioner's website, it's not even clear to me that the Antrim County Drain Commissioner has operational control of the dam, nor is it clear that the Antrim County Drain Commissioner has legal control of the dam. So I encourage you to do additional research on this and postpone any action. It does not appear that this is an immediate emergency, and I think that this is an item that requires a lot more study. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello. Good morning. Paul Maxbauer from Traverse City. I'll start by saying I, I serve on the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. I want to call your attention to, many of you probably are aware that a, a letter has been kind of distributed around to city officials, county officials, and East Bay Township officials dated June twenty-eighth from, the letter was sent from the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee regarding some issues, as you, some of you may know, there's some controversy between the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee and the County Parks Board. County Parks is working on a plan for the Rotary property that it will become a county park. Much of that plan, we, I personally am in favor. There's some good things in there, don't get me wrong. But there's a couple things in there that are apparently are still being pursued that would entail the, the rental of space at the, at the park for possibly wedding receptions, large group events, possibly being allowed to have like an open bar, that kind of thing. And most importantly, to the quiet area, people that love the quiet area, amplified music, like from a DJ or something like that. We find, I do, I personally am, am opposed to those uses because I think they adversely affect the Brown Bridge quiet area. I want to also call your attention to, I've been to several meetings over the last couple months, and I've been listening to public comment. I don't think I've heard one person comment in favor of large groups, alcohol, open bar, and amplified music, especially amplified music. I don't think I've heard one person support that. And I've heard dozens and dozens and dozens of people in public comment expressing opposition to that. And I want to call, call your attention to, just, and I don't know how much of this you're aware of, I want to call your attention to the fact that the people that are opposing live in the, in the Lakes region, the Lake Forest Lakes area, around the campground, or around the, the park. Other places in East Bay Township, and of course Traverse City and Grand Travers County. All of that, all of these people that are in opposition are a significant number, from what I can gather. The trail counter recently at Brown Bridge indicated in one year fifty-one thousand people use that trail. So what I'm, what I'm guessing is almost all of those people would probably be opposed to amplified music wafting in from the park to Brown Bridge quiet area. It's, it's just, it goes against the whole basis for having a quiet area. So, thank you very much for listening, and I appreciate having this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jacqueline Nutting, Andrus. I'm also an East Bay Township resident. I also have a seat on the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, but I'm addressing you today as a private citizen with my own concerns. And that matter that I'd like to quickly touch on this morning is the new Camp Graylik Park and its management plan that on April second, this commission voted to allow the Parks and Rec to move forward with. That plan has some specifics in it that directly and negatively impact the city-owned Brown Bridge quiet area that I need to call to your attention and ask for your consideration in resolving. The moment those planned specifics were learned, they jumped into action and immediately spoke up about five things that concern them. But for today, in essence of time, I wish to speak to only one of those issues that threatens the essence and serenity of the long-established, very special place, the Brown Bridge quiet area. The number one reason for its existence and popularity among many thousands of people is reflected in its name, the quiet area. This, the number one issue is amplified music. As of the August fourteenth Parks and Rec meeting, the plan was and still is allowing for indoor and outdoor amplified music in two of the three rental spaces. This is despite the overwhelming pushback and public outcry from the community, as well as the advisory committee, who all stood up and spoke passionately in opposition to amplified music at that meeting. By the end of that meeting, opposition had turned into outrage. The quiet area stands to be threatened by loud amplified music coming from, for example, a wedding reception, ringing out into the air and spilling over into the quiet area while people are trying to enjoy peaceful nature hike in the woods right next door. As Paul mentioned, fifty-one thousand hikers visited the quiet area last year, and that remains consistent over the last four years. That's more than half of the county population. Eighty-seven percent of the city voters voted to expand the quiet area because they want more quiet, not another civic center. This alone speaks volumes to the number of people who are also to be negatively affected by this unreasonable noise that is intended to be introduced. This is not Parks and Rec's being a good neighbor to their quiet area. I'll quote the Quiet Area Vision Statement. Restore, preserve, and protect the integrity of the natural environment, including its inhabitants, yet, inhabitants, yet allow managed public use for generations to come. The soundscape is part of that natural environment. Let's not take away what the evidence shows the county and city people want. Protect the quiet area soundscape. Prevent amplified music from being allowed in this new park. We owe it to the people, the city, the voters, and the quiet area, and the future generations. I personally see, personally see the quiet area as a little Yellowstone. Let's treat this local treasure with the respect it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well timed. Anybody else for public comment? Going once, going twice, three times, the charm. All right, so I'm going to move for an approval agenda. I will make the motion.
Support.
Let me finish. Sorry, I, thanks, bro. I'm going to make the motion, we approve the agenda with the change where nine A, the lower chain of Lakes, lake levels be moved to eleven, new business. That's a big item, and I'd like to make sure that we give it its due. So now I'll take your second.
Support.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. We are now moving on to the consent calendar. Mr. Gedman?
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission's staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted to receive and file or approve is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety on the county's website. Items to receive. Item A1, Department of Health and Human Services Pavilion's Board, June twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes. Item A2, the Board of Public Works, June twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes. Item A3, Letter to Board of Commissioners. Item A4, Housing and Homelessness Task Force, July twenty-twenty-five progress report. Item A5, Forclosed Funds Report. Item A6, Expenditure Report. Item A7, ARPA Status Report. Item A8, ARPA Project Update for the Acme East Bay Lift Station Number One Force Main Sewer Project. Items to approve. Items B1, the opioid settlement funds, spending plan, actuals, and settlement amounts. Item B2, ARPA Funding Reimbursement Request.
Thank you, Mr. Gedman. Anything, anybody who would like pulled at this time?
Move to approve as presented.
Worked fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Henshaw moved to support, or moved to approve as presented, with support, Mr. Nelson. That's a roll call vote, right?
Yes, sir.
Flynn?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving right along, Special Orders of Business, seven A.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Previously, this board has requested that Laura Glenn, the CEO of Munson Medical Center, come and present on the progress of the Mental Health Crisis and Wellness Center. She is here today with you, and welcome, Laura.
Great, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be back and provide an update. And before I get into more of the details, I wanted to just kind of refresh on the goals of the center and what we're trying to accomplish. Remember, we set out on this journey trying to ensure that we had a complete crisis continuum. What we were missing in this community was the facility, so that crisis facility you see on the infographic there, really a place to go for individuals who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis. And that really is the gap that the Crisis Center is filling in this continuum. At the outset, we planned for this to be a collaboration with Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, and there are services within the building that Munson Healthcare operates, and services that Northern Lakes operates. And I'm going to talk specifically about a Munson Healthcare service that was opened as part of Phase Two. And our whole goal with Northern Lakes is to share resources, be as efficient as we can to ensure the sustainability of these services for our community. As you will recall, we had plans on launching the services within the Crisis Center in phases. Very pleased to share with you that we hit a milestone in July, which was the opening of Phase Two services. So we expanded to twenty-four-seven access at that site, and we opened the psychiatric urgent care. And the psychiatric urgent care actually brings a psychiatrist to that location and dramatically expands the services that we can offer at the Crisis Center. So we've been in Phase Two now for a little over a month. I will note that really, we have kind of reached the point where this is the first time that these services are being offered in northern Michigan. This is the first psychiatric urgent care really north of Grand Rapids, and is a brand-new service to our community. Many of you have actually gone on a tour of the facility, but this is just a visual of some of the rooms that we have to support the psychiatric urgent care. So what is the impact that we've had since the opening of the center? So you will recall that we opened Phase One in January. And so Phase One was approximately six months long. You can see that we saw almost two-hundred-and-eighty individuals in that six-month period. That represented twenty counties, so very broad region. That was supported through Phase One. Since Phase Two opened, and my data is based on through Friday, August eighth, so really the first month of Phase Two being operational, we saw fifty-eight urgent care visits and over a hundred Crisis Center contacts. So what, what you should take away from this is our volume is increasing. And so with the expansion to twenty-four-seven, with the opening of the urgent care, we are serving more individuals in that location. And our goal, again, has been to address those behavioral health crises upstream, avoid emergency department visits, decompress our jails, and ultimately reduce the need for impatient admissions within this community. And I would say our experience to date is that the majority of crises are able to be resolved. Individuals are referred for follow-up within the community, and we've only had ten visits that have resulted in an impatient admission. We're continuing to track this data and learn and modify as we go, but we see this as being kind of early successes. So this is a little bit of an eye chart, but it was included in your packet. This is an update on the ARPA funds, so the five million dollars in funding that we were awarded. Thank you again. You can see, we have organized the ARPA dollars in kind of two main buckets. The first is the capital improvement, so the physical location on Brook Street on our campus. You will note that we still haven't fully spent those funds. And I will talk a little bit more about where we're at with the subsequent phases and where we're at in the licensing process. We do expect that we may need to make some additional modifications to the facility as we work through the licensing process. That's a normal thing. So we do expect that we will spend some of those dollars to address anything that comes up during the licensing process. On the operational side, you will note that we haven't spent any dollars yet on staff recruitment. I will note, we have expended resources on staff recruitment, so we will be starting to draw on those funds as we have been recruiting more individuals to work at the center. And then I'm going to spend more time talking about the psychiatric urgent care startup. So thank you again for your support to redirect those dollars to support the operational ramp-up of the urgent care. And again, I'm going to go through the, the details with you on how we are going to spend those funds. But to date, we've spent just under four million of the five million and have a little over a million that we feel confident we will spend to support expansion in Phases Two, or Three and Four, I'm sorry. So the psychiatric urgent care, again, appreciate the support to redirect dollars to support the operational ramp-up. We're being very transparent here in how we look at this service and how we plan to use those funds. So as I mentioned, this is a brand-new service. We've never operated a psychiatric urgent care. There's only a handful in the state of Michigan. And we are put together what we call a pro forma, so a projection of what the financials will look like for the service. And that pro forma is based on a whole lot of assumptions, many of which will probably be wrong as we learn and, and get into delivering services. So our goal is to ramp up volumes over a three-year timeframe. We're anticipating, once fully ramped up, we'll see about ten patients a day. Again, we could be totally wrong. It could be a lot more than that, could be less than that. But that is kind of what our kind of fully mature state is based on, is ten urgent care visits a day. And the way that we look at the financials of this program, we look at the direct program revenue. So the revenue received from serving the urgent care population, those ten visits a day. And then we look at the direct expenses tied to services rendered to those patients. So you will see in the revenue, we have our urgent care revenue, which is, that's what we would collect from Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, Priority Health, whatever the payer may be for the individuals served in the urgent care. You'll note, under other revenues, that is where we're going to plug in the ARPA funds. And the goal of the ARPA funds is simply to kind of bring the, bring balance to revenues and expenses as we ramp up our volumes. So you'll see in year one, the net income is zero. We are not trying to make any kind of profit off of the urgent care. We're simply trying to make the urgent care break even with revenues and expenses balancing out. So we plan to use the ARPA funds to balance out revenue and expenses as we ramp up. So obviously, how quickly we ramp up will, will directly impact how we use the ARPA funds. I think the other point I want to make kind of comes back to one of the original kind of philosophical goals of the center, which was to be efficient in our use of resources. To open the urgent care, we had to bring on a psychiatrist, full-time. We also had to add a nurse in the center. And we had to bring on support staff. The goal is to use those clinical and provider resources to support Phases Three and Four. But until Phases Three and Four are operational, the urgent care kind of bears all of the costs of those resources. So we truly believe that we will be able to share the costs, again, getting to that efficient, sustainable model, so that by year three, we will be able to bring this service to a break even on its own. But again, we have all of those resources right now fully allocated to the urgent care, and we will begin to spread those expenses and share those resources with the crisis residential units. So the psychiatrist in the urgent care is going to be the psychiatrist supporting the crisis residential patients, if that makes sense. But again, this is a level of transparency that we'll be sharing to show you exactly how we are utilizing those ARPA funds to support this operational ramp-up. And we get asked a lot about sustainability. And this is a key area of focus both for Munson and Northern Lakes. We have a lot of discussions together about sustainability. And just a couple points I want to mention. First, we have a center director, Michael Corby, if you've met him, he's fantastic. And he really has a holistic view of all of the programs in the building and really is helping us to make sure that we're being the most, we're using our resources in the most efficient way. And we know that there are multiple different funding streams supporting the services in that building, and we are trying to collectively work to maximize those different funding streams and again, ensure long-term sustainability. We will be, as we get more experience under our belt with urgent care, looking at hours of operation, days of the week. And as I mentioned, really getting to the point of being able to share staffing with the crisis residential units. That is going to be a key driver in ensuring we've got a sustainable model long-term. I will also note that there is value both to Munson Healthcare and to the community of diverting patients from the emergency department to the Crisis Center. The Crisis Center is not only a more appropriate place for individuals having a behavioral health crisis to receive care, it's a lower-cost setting. And so there are savings and resources that can be otherwise used to support emergency department services if we can get that behavioral health population served in the Crisis Center. So there is value there. And I want to just reiterate, in the ARPA agreement, we have committed to providing services for a minimum of ten years in that location. So we have a very vested interest and commitment to ensuring that we are being responsible and making sure that these services are sustainable long-term for the community. So what is up next? Phases Three and Four bring crisis residential beds to the Crisis Center. So in Phase Three, that is the adult crisis residential unit. That is the unit, if you've been to the building, on the main level, so you, it's, it's already built out. It'll be nine beds. We are in the licensing process. I think what we have learned is that the licensing process is longer than we had originally anticipated because of the fact that we are co-locating multiple services under one roof. It's the right thing for sustainability long-term, makes the licensing process complicated. And just, it has taken longer than we had anticipated. It's underway, and we're working closely with Northern Lakes on what that staffing and operational model is going to be. Phase Four is bringing the six pediatric crisis residential beds online. We achieved and overcame a major hurdle on the licensing side just within the last month. We have preliminary licensing approval, which is a great thing. We just have to make a few modifications to the facility. So that was great news. Talk about a very long and complicated journey, and really appreciate the support that we got from MDHHS trying to help us figure out a way, and they did. So we've, we've, that was a major barrier for us to overcome. And if you've been in the building, you may recall, we haven't touched the lower level. We didn't begin any construction there until we had that preliminary licensing approval to determine exactly the changes we needed to make down there. So we've completed the design, the project is out for bid, and we plan to start construction in the fall. So the construction timeline will really determine when we're able to open that pediatric crisis residential unit. But I'm really encouraged by the progress. The preliminary licensing approval was, was a very big deal and a very big step forward for the pediatric component of the building. So our focus now is bringing those crisis residential units online, completing that license, licensing process, and really kind of fulfilling the full scope of services at the Crisis Center. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions from Ms. Glenn?
Any questions for Ms. Glenn? Commissioner Morris?
Yes, hi. Really great news about the pediatric aspect of this. It's been a long time coming and very much needed. I just have a question. So this is a partnership with Northern Lakes. Is there like a reason that we don't have a representative of Northern Lakes here?
They're in the midst of a leadership transition. And really because phase two and the urgent care and the ARPA dollars, since we're, this is where the fiduciary, we've been kind of driving this forward and volunteering to provide updates.
Thank you.
I can share with you, Commissioner Morris, that Dr. Cummins is part of the leadership team. He's very active in the Wellness Center, and Northern Lakes is represented very well.
He's been doing a fantastic job.
He's doing, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and we really appreciated Dr. Cummins' support. I think he, you know, maintains his commitment to making sure that we can make this vision a reality and get, you know, deliver phases three and four, so.
Commissioner Walter, you had your hand up.
Yeah, a quick question on the numbers you shared earlier. Are all of those individuals or are they, are there any that are like, you know, same person, multiple visits?
It's a great question. There, and we had a count of distinct individuals versus individuals with multiple visits. We've absolutely had individuals who have had multiple visits. And I think that is part of the, part of the beauty of that facility is we have access for, so if individuals need to come back for a subsequent visit, they can, and they can get in. Even in the urgent care, we've had a couple of patients who, their plan of care was to, you know, come back a couple of days and ensure that they're, we're progressing. So there definitely are situations where same individual, multiple visits. So we can get, we could get those numbers on unique patients versus total visits.
Yeah, that might be interesting just to see that pattern and how it's resolved over time. And then the other thing is, you mentioned 20 counties or something like that. At some point, can you give us a breakdown on Grand Traverse County?
Yes, we have all of that. And unfortunately, I can't tell you the exactly percentage of Grand Traverse County. It is the majority. It is the number-one county served, not surprisingly, but happy to share with you. We're tracking all of that data so that we can, can share.
Yeah, and it makes sense. It's the summer times, too. So I'm sure there is some seasonality to the flow of people in and out who are maybe visiting the area and more in the summer.
Yes, we have a lot of counties represented at Munson Medical Center on any given day. I can tell you that, yes.
It just might be good next time to, if we could see a further breakdown, that would be great.
Happy to provide that, yep.
Commissioner Andrews, are you done? Commissioner Walter?
Yeah, thanks.
Oh, I thought you wanted to follow up.
Either way.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Nelson, please.
All right. So thanks for the presentation. When we, when we set this up, we kind of knew that we were pioneers forging a trail. And I appreciate that. And even like the pro forma, that was an honest answer. We, we don't really know. We didn't know when we started. But have you run, have you run, I know there's been a lot of successes, I want to be sure to state that. Have you run any surprises, holes in this system that we've set up? Any, any, any hole, any, any things that you want to talk about that maybe we could or should or would like to incorporate down the road? Anything come to mind?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, kind of the lessons learned so far. I, I think, you know, we have kind of modified and adjusted as we've gone, especially as we're planning for the crisis residential units. We've learned a lot about those services. We've learned a lot about what different payers require outside of Medicaid. And so I, what I, what we've done is kind of incorporate those learnings and modified our plans accordingly. I think the big unknown is, you know, we're, we're building this center, we're projecting how many patients we're going to serve. That's the big unknown. And there's, there's, while there are other crisis centers in the state that we've visited, we've talked to, you know, we asked questions of, but none of them are quite exactly like what we're trying to build here. And they serve a different population and kind of a different type of region. So what we're doing is really unique. And I think that the biggest, the biggest unknown right now is truly what those patient volumes are going to look like once we kind of ramp up services.
Thank you, Commissioner Flynn.
We heard from NAMI a few weeks ago about their outreach with their hotline or warm line, and they were getting a lot of upticks with adult males. And I'm wondering if that's kind of what we're also seeing at the crisis center, or is it kind of just like 50/50?
It's, well, so we, we track age, gender, county of residence. So we, we're tracking a lot of those demographics. I think we're seeing a pretty even mix of, of male and female patients being served. So I, I can't comment that we're seeing a similar uptick, but we certainly can go back and look at the data.
Thank you.
One else? Commissioner Andrews? Sorry.
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, you indicated that conceptually, the idea here is to provide an alternative to using the ER when someone is in a mental health crisis. Are you tracking whether this is actually providing that, or is this incremental, people who weren't going to go to the ER? And what is the impact on the ER? Are you seeing a decrease correlating to the increase in this facility?
So that is a great question. And we are, we are trying to, well, we are tracking data that will help us answer that question. I would say the real, the, the urgent care and having a psychiatrist present was one of the kind of key drivers for patients that could be served at the crisis center versus in the emergency department environment. So since we're kind of early on in that journey, that's only been since July 7th, we have, it appears as though we've made some impact on a reduction or redirecting patients that would have gone to the emergency department and came to the crisis center. It also, though, appears as though we may be serving patients that are coming to the urgent care that may not have chosen to go to the emergency department. So we have a way that we're tracking that. The challenge in the month of July is just, it's brand-new. And we're also, Munson Medical Center was incredibly busy in the emergency department. So just a lot going on to try to parse out how much of an impact the center has had. But as we track that data over time, we think we'll be able to start to see some trends. But we were having this, this very conversation with one of the psychiatrists who's providing services there, really trying to understand how much of it is shifting patients away from the emergency department versus individuals who are seeking care and probably wouldn't have gone to the emergency department. I think both are good outcomes, right? If individuals are seeking care before things escalate, that, that is a good thing, too.
And is there a diversion? I can appreciate that there's a diversion once someone comes into the urgent care that may get diverted to the hospital if necessary. Is there a reverse diversion, so to speak, from the ER over to the crisis center?
That's a great question. And we've been working with our emergency department to ensure that those situations are handled appropriately. There's a lot of rules we have to follow when an individual comes into the emergency department. There's a law called MTALA, and we've got to make sure that we're fulfilling all the, all the requirements under MTALA. But there have been times when we, there's been coordination between our emergency department provider and the crisis center to appropriately care for patients that come to the emergency department.
So related to the pro forma, the estimate of 10 patients per day, we're currently at about two. How, what's the strategy to work with partners in the community? I assume there's something like marketing, but not in the traditional sense. This is a difficult population to market to. How do you get from two to 10? And is, and is year one next year?
Year one, I think, year one started July 7th.
That's, okay. Thank you. So, yeah.
So our focus is really on other providers in the community and our community partners. So we're doing a lot, like with primary care providers, to make sure they've got information, rack cards in their office, and kind of getting out there in that provider community. That is where we're seeing a lot of referrals come from early on in this process. And, you know, we have kind of ramped up a little bit more of our kind of public-facing, I don't want to say promotion, but more kind of earned media to highlight the services in the crisis center and try to kind of promote through a lot of earned media stories. But again, our kind of marketing, if you will, has really been focused on referring provider offices and other partners whose patients could benefit from the services.
So as I understand it, on the pro forma, when we see the urgent care professional fees, revenue side of things, I, just to break it down a little bit, when an urgent care patient comes in, there's obviously some billing back presumably to a provider where those, those fees are coming from, those revenues, right?
Correct.
And primarily, I assume, given probably the expense, these are covered by some, at some level, either by private insurance, but potentially a significant portion is Medicaid, correct?
Yeah, what we're seeing so far, again, early numbers are, you know, kind of in the 40% range are Medicaid. You've got some Medicare in there in the over 65 population, and then the balance are commercially insured. So it is a mix. But the, but the largest payer group would be Medicaid.
And what's the analysis you've done as to what the, the work requirements that are coming with Medicaid are going to do to that availability for 40% of the current population?
How much time do you have?
Because I assume the pro forma assumes current revenues continue on a, on a sort of traditional trend line as opposed to a inverted trend line?
It does. And it's, and I think it's, it's a great question. It's a very fair question. We've done a lot of work because on, on understanding the impact of the OB-3 bill and the impact to Medicaid eligibility. The projections nationwide are between 10 and 20% of Medicaid enrollees will lose coverage. And so it's unclear what that's going to look like for the population seeking services here. So, you know, again, we are, in our kind of broader analysis, looking at between a 10 to 20% impact of individuals who have Medicaid, who would move into a self-pay bucket. That's not factored into the pro forma. I think, you know, we, the, kind of the, the call to action here is that, from a behavioral health perspective, the, our community organizations really need to be coming together to talk about this and have a voice. And we've, we've been doing a lot of advocacy, as have some of our other community organizations. OB-3 will impact this population. So we don't have that incorporated in the numbers at this point, but a 20% reduction in Medicaid enrollees will impact the revenue for these services. But not just these services. Again, I could talk about lots of other services we provide that will be negatively impacted because of that loss of coverage.
Related to revenues, I understand that, that CMH, Northern Lakes CMH, provides rental payments both for the facility itself, the services they provide, as well as the staffing that are provided. I want to say the number's around $500,000 a year, give or take, subject to check.
Yeah, I think, I, it's saying it's under $400,000 if I'm recalling the numbers correctly, but we can confirm that.
And so where is that? That's not part of the other revenues?
It is not, no. So this is the urgent care on its own two feet. It's just the direct revenues and direct expenses of the urgent care itself. So as an example, the way that, the way that the lease is structured with Northern Lakes, they are leasing the portion of the building for the services they're operating. So we're, we own the rest of the building. They are not leasing the whole building, only the building, only the portion of the building where their services are being operated. Then they're also included in that lease. We have to have 24/7 security in that building. So we share the costs of that. So it's their portion of the costs of 24/7 security. It's also their share of the costs of things, you know, like cleaning the building and those types of things. So that is what's kind of built into that lease, right? I would say probably the most expensive piece, though, in operating a 24/7 location that serves this population is security.
So I guess I'm, I didn't under, does CMH provide their own services in the facility independent of what Munson is providing in the facility?
Yeah, so if I go back, so the way that we've structured this partnership is that their services that they provide, they're the primary operator, and their services were, were the primary operator. So as an example, if you've been in the building, you've seen the living rooms. So they are providing, Northern Lakes is providing the crisis services, and they're supporting that living room model. So when it comes to the 24/7 staff, they, those are Northern Lakes staff, those are Northern Lakes services. We share some of the staff. But Northern Lakes is the primary operator of those services, like we're the primary operator of psychiatric urgent care. Does that answer your question, or does that create more confusion?
Well, I mean, it just, it just raises new questions, thanks. Because I would be very interested to follow up on Commissioner Morris's. I'd be interested to hear what they are doing and what their pro forma looks like on a, over, on a total basis, given that this is sort of a marriage. And it seems like, you know, there's more to the marriage than, than, than the Munson side of the equation. So I'm, I'm curious to see their sustainability plan and pro forma, given the challenges that we've already discussed and that are coming at us. I do want to ask about the, the beds that are coming online. Will those be incremental to what's the beds, the residential beds that are at Munson right now?
So what Munson has, we have 17 inpatient psychiatric beds. So they're licensed as inpatient beds. What we are bringing on at the crisis center are called crisis residential beds. So think of it as just one step below the level of care that's provided in our inpatient unit. But yes, these are incremental. So an additional nine beds, and it ends six pediatric beds. And we do not have any inpatient pediatric beds in northern Michigan.
Commissioner Anshel, thank you for your patience. I didn't forget you.
That's okay, thank you. Laura Glenn, thank you so much for this in-depth look at what's going on at the mental health crisis center. I think we kind of glazed over, because some of us have worked with you for, for years now, we've kind of glazed over your introduction, who you are and what you do at Munson Healthcare. You're the chief operating officer, correct?
Correct.
Right, so Munson Healthcare touches, how many counties now?
Twenty, our service area is 27 counties.
27 counties, seven hospitals?
Seven hospitals, yes.
And you, Laura Glenn, are responsible for the leadership team that oversees seven hospitals, 20-some counties, 1,000-plus physicians in a mental, or in a healthcare system. And right here in Grand Traverse County, it was a testament to our commitment to mental health in this county when this board of commissioners committed $5 million to something that no one else was really doing in this region. And Munson partnered with us. And I think it's also a testament that you're here today. You have a lot on your plate. And this one facility, this one program has so much of your focus. I think it's a testament to Munson Healthcare's commitment to mental health, not only in this county, but in this region, because this is a facility that serves many, many counties. There's nowhere else to send people for this particular service other than an ER where there is, you know, they're, they're understaffed, they're under-equipped to deal with a lot of mental health situations. I know in years past, I've had personal friends of my family have to send people to Grand Rapids for psychiatric mental health care. Now we have it right here. So I, I think it's just of note to our community that we now have this here, and it's, and it is a testament to the commitment of, of both our local leaderships and the board of commissioners and our local leaderships in, in our healthcare system. So I wanted to just tip my hat to Munson Healthcare, to you, Laura Glenn, and everything going on. I know it's not a perfect world, that there's a lot to navigate. There's a lot of things at the state and federal level we don't have control of, but we are still forging the path. And I, I think the community needs to hear that message. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate those comments.
Ms. Glenn, so the part where, and, see, Northern Lakes CMH is providing some revenue. I might have missed this part. So does any of that rent and the dollars they provide as revenue for this offset the costs for the urgent care? I mean, year two, we're going to be $18,000, or urgent care will be $18,000 in the hole. And then year three, it's $225,000, which is huge, but I get that as the amount of growth has shown. So is there any, that partnership with CMH, does any of their contributions offset some of those losses?
So I think where the, where the contributions can not just offset the losses, but make sure our collective programs are sustainable, it's on that salaries and wages, you know, and salaries and benefits line. That is where we will be working with Northern Lakes to share those services in phases three and four. So I think it's less about the, the lease and more about how we share staff as phases three and four come online.
Fantastic. Sorry if I missed that earlier. Thank you for answering that.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure. Go ahead, Commissioner Andrews.
So on the preceding slide where there's $400,000 of ARPA dollars, am I reading that correctly? $400,000 of unspent but budgeted ARPA dollars for staff recruitment? $400,000 of unspent but budgeted ARPA dollars for staff recruitment. Can those, under the agreement with the county for the ARPA, can those be repurposed to offset future-year costs? I mean, is staff recruitment, is that, is that the best use of those funds, given the numbers we're seeing?
Well, so I think when we went into this and put together the budget for the ARPA grant request, one of the challenges we saw coming was the recruitment of staff and net new staff to the region, which is why we allocated dollars for staff recruitment. I will note that Northern Lakes has expended some staff recruitment funds, and so we will be, we will be submitting those within the next couple of months. So we will be, they have, they've recruited actually a lot of staff for the center. We have begun recruitment with the urgent care, so we have some expenses. Do I think we'll spend the $400,000? Maybe not. And I think, you know, we are not yet asking for the dollars or any balance to be reallocated, but I would say it's a great question, and we may be coming back to see if we could reallocate any remaining funds. But I think we will, we have spent dollars on staff recruitment that will start to be submitted for reimbursement under the grants within the next, I would anticipate the next 60 days.
Thank you. Any more? Thank you so much for your time and doing this. We really appreciate it. We're, I'm excited to see where we're going to go with this.
Thank you.
That's a big lift so far, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
We're going to move on to 9B, everybody's favorite MS4. Mr. Eldred.
I'm going to ask Mr. Forsythe to take care of this discussion, as he's leading the charge.
Please excuse me, you're having a little bit of a technical issues? All right. I think we...
Somebody taking the lead.
Yes. All right. So we are set. Thank you. We're ready. So with me virtually, we have Sean Middleton. Sean is with the Spicer Group. Spicer Group was retained by the City of Traverse City to be the MS4 consultant to help the city get their permit application filed by the due date of August 29th. So if you recall, back in June, we started involvement with the city, the city, sorry, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners authorized us to work with the city to have our part of this program nested under their permit application. This was all subject to an intergovernmental agreement. That intergovernmental agreement has been drafted, reviewed by civil council, and ultimately the intergovernmental agreement requires the county to pay its proportional share of just over $14,000 to the city for their efforts in leading, to get this permit application filed with Eagle by the deadline. Also, North Ed, the ISD Intermediate School District, is also nesting with the city, so it is a three-part cost-sharing arrangement. My understanding is North Ed has approved, signed off, the intergovernmental agreement. Again, if you, if you have, if you have any detailed questions about the MS4 program, the county's infrastructure that's impacted by MS4, we do have Sean Middleton available with Spicer to answer questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, everybody? Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mr. Forsythe. I just have a handful of questions to understand the context for where we're at at this point in the larger picture of MS4 and the transition, this community's transition to improvement to water quality. Hopefully, that's the goal of the program. In particular, as I understand it, the first step where we're at right now with the deadline in a week or so is to, or 10 days, is to apply, correct? And this is, that is the only thing this is saying, is that we are here reporting for duty, so to speak. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
And it's fair to say that after we apply, that's when the work will actually begin in terms of identifying all the sources of stormwater and contamination and opportunities to reduce through infiltration and, and other tools that we have available, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there will be compliance work. My understanding is, once the application is submitted with Eagle on August 29th, it will take Eagle six months to review. So for about half the year, we, we're anticipating not getting any comments from Eagle. If they approve, reject, or ask for changes to the application, they will respond accordingly. And yes, part of that will be the actual implementation of the program and our role of doing that.
And so I understand it, the city has, just like the road commission and for outside of the city, the city has responsibility for all of its stormwater that is collected on impervious surfaces like roads, right?
Correct.
And the county's responsibility, the reason we're nesting in the city application is because of two facilities that the county owns that are located in the city, the Civic Center and the Governmental Center, right?
Yeah. Actually, no. I apologize. Initially, it was three properties, Civic Center, Governmental Center, and the Law Enforcement Center. What we've learned, well, the investigation conducted with Spicer and input from John Chase and Chris Como, was that the Civic Center actually does not have any stormwater that infiltrates into city sewers. So the only two properties are the Law Enforcement Center and the Governmental Center. All the other, all the other county's properties either fall without the MS4 boundaries or are not MS4 because no stormwater is getting into any sewer system.
Interesting. So it's even smaller than we originally thought.
Correct.
So just for context, this application where the county is going to pay 13%, I believe, of the overall application cost, that in no way reflects our contribution to stormwater impacting the resources here, the stormwater system, the city's stormwater system, right?
Yeah.
We're not responsible for 13% of the stormwater that the city manages, correct?
Correct.
Maybe less than 1% probably.
Correct.
So, but, but as I understand it, this expense is, even if we did this on our own, we would spend at least $15,000 to make this application, because we would have had to go out and hire Spicer or somebody to make that application on our behalf, right?
Yeah, we would have spent, yes. Can't tell you exactly what that would be, but fair to say we would be spending a lot, a lot more. And then there are administrative burdens that we'd have to deal with, of managing a contract with a consultant. I can't, I can't speak exactly for John and his capacities, but we do know that he's very busy with a lot of projects going on.
And so just for, you know, my personal perspective and my support for this application that's, or the resolution that's in front of us, is partly driven by the fact that this is a short timeline to file an application that we would have spent more money on than nesting under the city. But this does not set us up necessarily going forward to implement the plan as nested within the city. It may be very within our, we may have a very different approach to how we implement the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, the, yes, that is correct. We're not, we're not locked in with the city. There is, it's basically a termination for convenience, if we give the city notice. So at some point down the road, if we decide we want to handle this ourselves, or if we want to look at it from a more regional approach, and there are some good models out there for a regional approach, we're not locked into this.
And we could even take components of it, right? Like the educational component could be regional, whereas the sampling of the, of each of the syst, of each of the manholes or whatever could be on a per, a per-unit basis.
Correct.
With that, I'll make the motion that we support the resolution as presented.
I'll support that. Thank you, Mr. Forsythe, for your diligence. Any comments, questions, concerns? A motion on the table by Commissioner Andrews, supported by myself. To approve? All righty. So, Mr. Gadman, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Flynn?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And we'll move right along to our favorite finance director, Mr. Bott.
Good morning, commissioners. The board has asked for routine financial reporting, and this is a document that we have worked with. And Mr. Bott would like to introduce this document to you and kind of walk through what it says and the detail within it.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is for your general fund. I believe it starts on page 172 in your packet. And the information, there's a page for the revenues on page 173, and then the expenditures. Just showing a comparison through six months of your fiscal year, how 2025 matches up or lines up with where we were at with the same six-month period in 2024. And I'll start with, no two years are the same, but to some extent, your revenues and the expenditures in your main operating fund should follow somewhat of a pattern or should have some trend that's comparable to your prior years. And it would be almost impossible to go through the thousands of individual revenue line items and expenditure line items to give you any type of variance analysis that would not bore you to death. So, so you have to do this in some type of a summary, or there has to be some basis for aggregating the information. So with the revenue, it's pretty much revenue by cost center. And I did the same thing for the expenditures, by cost center, that's basically by department. And then I just tried to focus on variances that were significant, and I provided a little bit of a note or an explanation to explain why, you know, they were different. With the expenditures, you know, I can answer any individual questions you might have, but if you look at page 174, you need to keep in mind that our budget from 2024 was $3.2 million more than the budget for 20, in 25. So our 2024 budget was $47.8 million, and the budget for 2025 is just a little bit over $51 million, at least the initial budget that was approved and adopted. So when you look at some of those expenditure increases, that is a function of the fact that the budget is simply higher in 2025. Now, when you go back to the revenue side, there's really nothing that's causing me a significant concern. Through the end of June, we don't have our main revenue. We don't even start to collect the property tax revenue until July 1st. Interest revenues are the big item, the notable difference, lower in 2025 compared to 2024, and that's primarily timing. The treasurer has been working hard to get caught up. We are receiving the interest, we just have not, at that point, we did not have six months' worth of interest recorded. Believe it or not, in the month of August, they're almost back on track with having all of those interest revenues recorded. So we'll see a different picture or situation. I believe you want this report every month, which we can do. We can run it in our ERP system. The system runs the report. I just need to be able to explain what the variances are. So looking forward to providing this every month and kind of keeping you...
Sorry.
So are we.
You almost made it, Dean.
So when we were talking with the Agenda Setting Committee, this was something that we talked about, having on a more frequent basis to allow commissioners to have a full appreciation for specifically the general fund. As Dean stated, the report in and of itself is rather simple to pull. It's just a matter of the explanation that has to come with it. If this is not something you want to see on a monthly basis, please let us know. But at this point in time, it is our plan to have it on a monthly basis.
Comments or questions for Mr. Bott or Mr. Eldred?
And just to be clear, I have no problem providing this every month.
I suspect that to be the truth.
I like seeing the cost centers listed, and I think that it, sometimes you read something, at least for me, I have to read it sometimes three times if it's a lot to digest, and by the third time, it really sticks. So I'd be willing to do it quarterly, but I think monthly is good because I see it differently each time I look at it. So it's helpful to see it monthly.
I would agree.
Mr. Walter?
I find it helpful as well. I'm wondering if we can change the formatting a little bit, because I have a hard time following the lines across without a better differentiator.
Make it a little larger.
Could you show grid lines?
Well, not larger, just like, yeah, the grid that maybe, you know, usually comes with a spreadsheet-type output. It's just hard to actually follow exactly, you know, from the cost center all the way across.
We can work on that.
Don't ask him for color to make it pretty. That's not his job.
It can be colored.
I don't mean color, it's just like...
I know, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding him.
It is hard to follow, like, some of the cost centers, like, it's two lines, but then, like, the variance information, I'm not sure exactly what it's referring to. So if we had some cells or some kind of a grid, it would be more helpful to follow along.
It might get locked up.
So when this exports from Workday, it is, it is an Excel sheet that exports. It is a little, to use an IT term, klugee with the spreadsheet, but we can work on manipulating that to make sure that it's got some type of separation between the cost centers.
Thank you.
Klugee is what you meant, right?
Yes.
Yeah, klugee is what she was thinking.
Quick question, Commissioner Andrews. Thank you, and I'll echo the other comments. This is incredibly helpful, and I appreciate it, especially if we can declugee it, if that's the word.
Word of the day.
If, one question that I have is capital improvement budget, and I'm not sure...
Yeah, in the bottom of the third page.
I'm looking at the bottom of the expenditures page. Is one of these line items our overall capital improvement plan, capital improvement plan budget? How does that work?
No. What, short answer is no. Those are transfers. What you're seeing on the expenditure report is a transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. Number, you do have a separate capital improvement fund that has a much higher balance than just that transfer amount. And the amount that was budgeted for 2025 is a relatively low amount because of the fund balance policy that we have in 2024. Based on the fund balance policy, based on your 2023 audit, we transferred $3.5 million to the capital improvement fund, which was the primary funding for your 2025 CIP Capital Improvement Plan. This is just the annual transfer from the general fund to support, you know, the capital improvement fund. So it's a part of the overall budget in a separate fund. Most of those down at the bottom of the report are the transfers that the general fund will make to Health Department, Circuit Court, District Court, to parks, the friend of the court, Community Corrections, the County Facilities Fund. And there is some variant, variation in the amounts from year to year. If you didn't have the significant transfer that was made in 2024 to the capital improvement fund, you might see a higher transfer out here for the general fund to support that overall capital improvement fund budget.
Anything else?
I appreciate it. I feel like I'm not 100% sure if we're on track, but I also recognize that the nature of the spending, spending and revenues is kind of lumpy. So it's kind of hard to say that we projected that by this time this year, we would be here, and in fact, we are up or down from that. But I feel like that would, that would typically be something I would think we would, in a home budget, I would see, you know, by this time this year, I would have spent this much, and I'm way over or way under, and I think it's harder to do.
Yeah, even, well, there are some time... Well, there are some timing differences, too. Generally, through June, we would have two quarters' worth of those county appropriations recorded. They're not included in the numbers that you're seeing here through June 30th. We need to do a better job of keeping those quarterly appropriations consistent in my department. And that makes it, you have fewer variances that you need to expand. But to answer your overall question, I have no concern with where we're at on either the revenue components side of the budget or the expenditure side of the budget at this point in time, even through today's date. We're tracking very well.
Edgar, on the expenditure page, you're between last year and now, you're talking not quite 4.5% difference.
And, but, you know, the timing of one payroll can swing those numbers quite a bit, too. So, you know, whether or not we had 13 payrolls at June 30th of 2024 and only 12 cash basis payrolls in '20, all of that makes a difference in the numbers. And, but I'm not seeing anything in either, any of our funds at this point in time that really caused me any budget or financial concern.
Awesome. Anything else for Mr. Bott? Thank you, Mr. Bott. I'm going to suggest we take a 10-minute break before we continue for this evening, or this morning.
One minute warning, one minute warning.
So you put the data into one of those AI programs?
All righties, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to bring this meeting back into session. Back to order, we are going to be nine D owners representative, I believe, Mr. Alger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we spoke about last meeting, we have approved that Cunningham Limp go forward as the construction manager, which kind of leaves a void for us. And I did couch this with the board at that meeting that there is an option for us to use the building authority. The building authority actually owns the buildings that we have that are have bonds on them. So like we own that the building authority owns the Pace Building, the building authority owns Pavilions. So we actually have to transfer deeds now because of the recent settlement with Pace. We'll have to transfer deeds to the building authority. So it does stand to reason that we could use that as a model. And we are actually recommending that we use the building authority as the owner's rep and allow them to review the invoicing and the, you know, the costs that we are expending because of construction and also kind of monitor the progress. And additionally, we'd like to go out for proposals for a local architect, somebody that has expertise in the field that we could use in the event that we need to have some type of a dispute clarified. You heard from Bobby Poplinsky last meeting that there's already redundant systems in Partners in Architecture and Cunningham Limp. Both of them have to approve work going forward. Everything is a competitively bid process. And Partners in Architecture within their agreement actually has a lot of the things that we want to do within their agreement currently. They're supposed to be watching out for Grand Travis County as well as Cunningham Limp. I understand fully and appreciate the fact that this board has a desire to have yet another layer of security in that respect. So this is our effort to try to gain that additional layer. And I would not anticipate that we would have a heavy need for architectural services beyond Partners in Architecture or Cunningham Limp, but certainly somebody local that we could trust and use in the event that we have a need, it would be very helpful. So that is what we are requesting to do. I don't know if you've know that the building authority is Nick Agostinelli. He's the chairperson. He's a local contractor. Lori Topol, is she with Atwell-Malby?
I think so.
Atwell-Malby, Jamie Callahan is the treasurer of Grand Travis County. He sits on that board. And then Dean and I are also the appointed reps for from the Board of Commissioners to be on that that authority. So we are recommending that we go that route for the first project that we have in the EOC 911 and the Cobb Central Operations Building or Facility. And that will be our recommendation. Any questions?
Mr. Hensel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where to begin? So most people, especially businesses who own property, put them in something like an LLC limited liability company for a shell holding company to limit liability. And that's really what the building authority is. It's it doesn't have an office. It doesn't have a staff. It doesn't have regular meetings. It is ill-equipped for the purpose that you're proposing it for. Everything the building authority has or does is really through county administration. They don't, I mean, they don't even meet. It's it's like a requirement of it's like the Hospital Finance Authority. It hardly ever meets. It's once every few years. It's because some obscure state law that was built to fit downstate Michigan requires it. So we had to form it. It's just a holding shell. It's nothing. And you're proposing it as an owners representative for a multimillion dollar project. It confuses me and it, I don't, I don't know. I feel like it lacks transparency as to why we would do that.
Well, I guess I'm confused.
Well, I don't think he was here for the discussion. So it's probably.
The what?
We discussed this.
Okay.
So that's probably why it is confusing to you.
How is this entity a good owners representative to keep an eye on the dollars and cents of the taxpayers of Grand Travis County? When, I mean, it hardly meets.
Well, they they don't meet unless there's a need for them to meet. And I'll give you an example. When the Pavilions was under construction and they were heavily in heavy activities with their remodels, with this building authority met routinely. And what the what the authority did during that process, they reviewed each and every payment. They reviewed the invoices and they asked questions surrounding why this invoice is this? Is this necessary or is this not necessary? And it also approved the bills associated with the cost of construction. So the question if you're, the question of do we need this? I don't know that we do need this. I'm saying this is an added layer of another group of eyes looking at a process that is in place so that in the event that Cunningham Limp and Partners in Architecture somehow collude to pull the wool over Grand Travis County's eyes, who's there watching for that? And I think this is an added layer of security for the the project. You're relying on the people involved.
How how much time will the members of the the building authority board commit to this, you know, week to week, month to month? How will they, do they plan to look at things? Or are they only going to listen to complaints or concerns? I mean, how are they going to see what's going on?
Mostly through the billings and the invoicing.
So they're actually planning to meet and go over the billings and invoice and get summaries and reports?
Well, the building authority hasn't even been approached about this yet. So it's, but they they have the responsibility regardless. As soon as you bond, that is the building authority's obligation. So it's the combination of the building authority and the architecture architect of that we engage to help fly spec this, that is the added layer of protection.
Okay. Don't get me, I have a lot of faith in you, in, you know, the administrative team and the members of the building authority. But I also believe in trust with the Verifi. And that's why I'm bringing this up as a concern, like our, you know, our our builder and our architect seem to be pretty close together. And that's good. But it also creates that potential for conflict of interest that they're a little bit too friendly with each other. And that's why, you know, I've been a proponent of having an owners representative who is not so tight with them, just someone with some experience that, and I know Nick has built many neighborhoods and, you know, we've got people with different experiences. But I I just feel like, you know, I'm just weary about this.
So I, so I don't, I understand Commissioner Hensel and I don't disagree. I think fences make good neighbors. Agreements that we have in place with both Cunningham Limp and Partners in Architecture already designate process that is in place. So there is a significant level of protection for the county involved in those agreements. And we're trying to satisfy that added added desire on behalf of Grand Travis County to make sure that everything is above board. If we don't want to do this, I'm okay with that. Matt just pointed out the building authority is an OMA obligated board. They have to meet. And if we meet monthly or bi-weekly to review the invoicing and the process that is being used through Project Alpha, we can do that. That is yet to be determined because we have not yet had any discussion with the building authority directly. But as soon as we bond, this will be something that the building authority is involved in.
Okay.
Well, I just understand it as preemptively, like we're assuming we're going to bond. We're assuming they're going to have to meet. So we're just designating it now in advance of that.
Yes.
And is it fair to say that in part the gap on that board in terms of the technical expertise that an architectural firm would, your your staff identified that maybe we would, this building authority in and of itself, as it currently stands, isn't entirely ready to do this. But if you bring in the technical support from a RFP for architect, it would add to the ex, the the team's expertise to be able to pull this off effectively, hopefully.
That's correct.
And can I ask then, and I was going to ask before Commissioner Hensel, and I think, I think we, I think we agree, we violently disagree on on the the concept that we need an extra layer of protection here. And I think the concept was to do it efficiently by using a body that already exists instead of creating a new body to do that, I think, is the general idea. And a body that's already going to be involved in looking at these invoices anyway. So can we add, you know, this to their plate? My question is, let's say the architect, you know, we get the RFP and they come in and there's a designated person. And I assume it's going to be a a person so that they get familiarity with the project and the cadence and the and the nature of the project. Do do you anticipate that they are an advisor? Or do you anticipate that they get, they're they're not going to be a decision maker, right? Tech, they're a technical advisor?
The architect?
Yeah.
No, they would be an advisor.
Can I just comment on one thing? And sorry, Nate, I didn't catch this, but really it should be architect or engineer. Both are, there there could, engineering issues could come up with the site plans, like conditions. So we would, we would want an architectural engineering firm that has that multiple multidisciplinary approach. And truly would be time, material, issue check, spot check, help with change orders that may come up, things of that nature, truly an advisor, independent expert, where as needed basis.
I'm good with that. I am a little bit concerned that the as needed basis limits the ability for issue spotting in real time. If you have, if the committee, if the advisory board is issue spotting and only asks when it sees an issue instead of having the architect or technical team on the front end, I worry that things may not be spotted, if that makes sense. You know, you, I just use from a legal perspective. The sooner you get legal into the into the room, the sooner you're going to identify legal issues until, if you wait till you've been sued.
But we have the architect already. So it's not like we don't have an architect.
No, no, I appreciate that. I, but but the concern is that this is a third party check, right? Like this is making sure that when we get an invoice from Partners in Architecture or Cunningham Limp, that there's not something funny in there. And I don't think any of us think there is. But I, my concern is that we have independent eyes who are much more familiar with seeing those sorts of invoices involved. So my only concern, it's not my only concern, but I I'm willing to try this. If it doesn't work, I think we can come up with a better plan. I think the absence of this is worse than the presence of this motion today. So, but I do think that we should, when you bid out the architect slash engineering expertise, it should be perceived that they're going to staff this. They're going to be at all the meetings, not when we need you on an ad hoc basis. That's my concern.
That's what I was assuming too. They would be there at the regular building authority meetings where they're reviewing the invoices and answering any questions.
We're not married to this. What we're trying to do is find that added layer of protection. So if the board is more comfortable going out for a straight RFP for owners rep, we're okay with that as well. I just, I want to make sure that you're comfortable with the process. This is our first go. And we perceive and contemplate more activity to follow. So I, we don't want to do it wrong. And what the board is comfortable with, I'm okay with.
I just keep remembering Septage Treatment Plant.
Speaking of attorneys, designing things they shouldn't be doing.
Do we, do we think that, I mean, you haven't connected with them. Does this group have the capacity? I mean, obviously several of them are county employees, but does the group have capacity to become the owners rep and not just the building authority when we're bonding? Does that feel like, I mean, you know, if you don't, I don't know how often you anticipate meeting, but.
We would, I would think we would meet monthly during the during the construction phase. You know, Nick Agostinelli is a cost, is a contractor in the area. Lori Topol works with Atwell-Malby. So she's, is she an engineer? I don't know that she is an engineer, but she's an engineering firm. And it, I have full faith and confidence for the role that they are intending to take on, I have confidence that they could do it. The, to Chris's point, architectural engineering firm, that is somebody that we would need as as an expert in that field to fill a void in the building authority.
Does the building authority have the budget and wherewithal to, if they deem like, hey, we need a professional, we want to hire an engineer to be our owners rep? Do they have that ability?
They would have to come back through this board.
I personally feel that, I like the concept and the idea, but I had hoped that we had had a conversation with the building authority before we said, hey, guess what? You're doing this. Because I'm like, because if they're not ready to do that, they can't do it. They have to hire somebody out. As to Administrator Alger's point, they have to come back to us. Then we might as well just skip that step. So I would ask that before we vote on anything, that perhaps somebody should have the building authority meet and let's prep, let's have that conversation. I'm good with the extra layer. And matter of fact, I think we owe the taxpayers to have more layers of oversight, even though that's the bane of government and tax dollars. Commissioner Andrews.
I'm going to make the motion that we direct administration to engage the building authority to ascertain whether the building authority believes that this structure is the right structure to provide sufficient protection for the county.
I'll support.
Fantastic. So we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews with support by Commissioner Hensel. Comments, questions, or concerns? Both so must.
Sam, you're going to have to watch the video.
I'd be happy to do that.
Spring doesn't have little lenses on his glasses, raising watch.
I'll just reiterate, as our civil council has advised, this is an OMA subject board. So you'll have to officially hold the meeting. You can't just round robin and call them up individually without having a public meeting that's posted to make a decision and give a response and have discussion.
Thank you for that added clarity. I appreciate that. Seeing that there are no more comments, questions, or concerns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for your time. We are now going to move to unfinished business, going once, going twice, three times. It's the charm. New business, lower chain of lakes, lake levels. Mr. Alger?
I would like to introduce Leslie Myers, the Drain Commissioner for Antrim County. She has brought with her some support. And so I met with Leslie in June. This came to us via email early May-ish that there are some concerns specific to the spillway in Elk Rapids. And the spillway in Elk Rapids actually controls the lake levels for Skegumog and Elk Lake. Skegumog and Elk Lake both touch our county border. And the Drain Commissioner informed me that, of some history that I guess I will let her inform you of. But I was unaware that, you know, we had a a lake level assessment or a lake level order in place from the 1970s. My understanding is that that assessment was made one time and it was no longer assessed. So here we are. They have some needs for the Elk Rapids spillway. And I'm going to let Leslie take it. I'm great to see that she's got her hands on technology.
We'll see how good that is. I'm going to try here. Okay.
Let Leslie bring you up to speed. There, and I don't think there's any action required today. This is informational at this point. We did work with Leslie and I know that Stacy was involved as well, trying to identify a date of a study session that we could meet. It just was not working in their, in the timeframe. So I appreciate the board's attention.
Thank you very much. My name is Leslie Myers. I serve two positions with Antrim County. I am the Drain Commissioner. But like most drain commissioners in northern Michigan, there's not much responsibility that goes to the Drain Commissioner. My other title is an appointed one, and I am the operator of dams. Antrim County has two dams throughout what we call the Elk River Chain of Lakes. The Elk River Chain of Lakes covers about 500 square miles. It covers five counties. But 72% of it happens to be in Antrim County and the other 28% is in the outlying counties. There's about 200 miles of shoreline, 75 miles of waterway, 14 lakes, seven rivers, and over 200 streams that feed this system. Its most important thing is, is that it provides 60% of the fresh water to Grand Travis Bay. And that is the Elk River Chain of Lakes responsibility. We have divided, divided for our purposes while we were doing some research, there are two parts to the chain. There's the upper chain, and that's everything above the Bel Air Dam. And then the lower chain, which is everything below the Bel Air Dam. Grand Travis County happens to fall into the lower portion. We've come to find out we have some problems throughout the chain. This past March, March 28th, to be specific, the rain started falling. And boy, did they fall. And if you were at at or about 100 foot above water level, you got rain. And you got rain for five days and it went strong. But if you were above that 100 foot above the the water, you got ice. And everybody remembers the ice storms that we saw that happened. Well, what it did is it raised the water levels over three feet in Antrim County. People flooded. We did our very best we could, but we had had a very big snow last year. When the rain started, the ground was still frozen. The lakes were still frozen. There was nowhere for the water to go. Prior to that, though, Antrim County started studying the chain of lakes because of flooding issues throughout. And we found that we had serious issues at the Bel Air Dam. And we also found that there were issues at the overflow spillway of the Elk Rapids Dam. Antrim County inherited both of those dams. We didn't build them. We just inherited them. The Bel Air Dam came from the city of Charlevoix. It was originally built in 1905 to provide the streetlights to the city of Charlevoix. And in 1971, they came over to see us and they said, hey, we don't need this anymore. Here you go. So we inherited that one. And in the late 90s, Traverse City Power and Light decided that they didn't want the hydro dam in Elk Rapids anymore either. So they said, here you go. So we've inherited both of these. Throughout the times, or the the times there, two lake orders got put into effect. And there was a lake level order for Lake Skegumog and Elk Lake that was put into place in approximately the early 70s. And Antrim County has taken the responsibility of filling that order. But it's bigger than just Elk Lake and Lake Skegumog. Torch Lake, Clam Lake, and Lake Bel Air also depend on that dam for their levels in their lakes. So we have these old lake level orders that are kind of past their prime, so to speak. And what we did was we decided to, you know, I think that I opened the wrong presentation, but that's okay. We had tried to shorten it up, not knowing how much time we had with you guys today. So I downloaded one. And you were so helpful, but it turned out it was the old one that was on the, but that's okay. I I digress a little bit. So anyway, after the storms, the county board knew that we had to take some action and that we also had to talk to the neighboring counties. So they passed a resolution on May 1st that did about four or five things. And the number one thing they did is they said, Drain Commissioner and operator of dams, would you please take care of this? And so they made me the delegated authority to speak on behalf of Antrim County about lake level issues. The second thing they did is they said, you have permission to go talk to the neighboring counties and all municipalities involved on our behalf. And as Nate said, we've been trying to do this since May, when we made the first thing. And finally, we got to be here today. The third thing they said that I could do is they said I could spend some money and hire some engineers and an attorney to help me with this because I knew I couldn't do it alone. They also authorized me to spend up to $125,000 before I had to come back and ask for more. I'm about ready to go and ask for more because engineering studies and attorneys aren't very cheap. I mean, if you want good ones, you pay for that. So I then, of course, have done everything I can over the last few years, as I've watched this all grow, and gotten as much grant money as I can. And I was able to secure a five thou, a five million, or a half a million dollar grant, I'm sorry, a half a million dollar grant to do a complete engineering study and draw construction documents for the Bel Air Dam. I have tried everywhere that I can to find something similar for the Elk Rapids Dam, but I cannot because it is a hydroelectric dam. It doesn't meet the same qualifications and doesn't fall into the same pots of money. So with that, I am here. So with that, I am here to ask you to come on over to our party, so to speak. And with that, we're leaving the expertise of what I can do, and I'd like to turn it over to Stacy Hisong. We have hired Stacy to be our attorney, and I will let you take it from here, and we have the old presentation just as we have. And I'll be here for any questions.
Good morning, Still. Thank you. I'm Stacy Hisong with the law firm of Fehy Schultz-Bursick Roads, and I deal with lake level issues all across the state. And I'm going to say that you're already part of the party. You might just not know that yet, as Nate mentioned.
As long as it's not the tab pickup part of the party.
It's your party, too. So what we're talking about is the inland lake, Part 307. There's an established lake level for this chain of lakes that happened in the 1970s under what was called the Inland Lake Level Act. That's been in place since the 1920s. In 1994, I'm sure as Commissioner Andrews is well aware, all the environmental statutes in the state of Michigan were recodified into the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. And so part, what inland lake level act is now Part 307, lake improvements, Part 309, wetlands, Part 303, inland lakes and streams, Part 301. So we're dealing with what's called Part 307, and it's that inland lake level act, just under a new name. And so while there are about 5,000 lakes in the state of Michigan, there's only about 400 that have an established lake level, putting it under the jurisdiction of the counties that those are in. And so there's three main players in an established lake level under Part 307. The county boards, where the county, the lake is involved, and so in this situation, we have three county boards. Then there's the Circuit Court that makes some decisions, and then the delegated authority. And so for this chain of lakes, you have three county boards that are all required to take action in order to move forward under Part 307. The main, the main player in this one is Antrim County, but all three counties, Calcaska County, Grand Traverse County, and Antrim County, all need to take action to move forward. And then the Antrim County Circuit Court is where the lake level was originally established, so that's going to be the lucky Circuit Court that gets to deal with all these issues. And then the delegated authority, which is at the moment the Antrim County Drain Commissioner and Leslie, all three counties have to select a delegated authority. Historically, has been the Antrim County Drain Commissioner for this particular lake level. So those are kind of the three players. You're part of the party. You've been part of the party since the 70s, and you, with the other two county boards of commissioners, need to take certain steps, are required under Part 307, but some are mandatory, some are, you know, up to you, and this is part of the ones that are up to you, is to update that 1970s order that we have. And so what is the county's role? So the county's role basically are the big parts of this. Should we have a lake level established in the, under Part 307 in the first place? That's already been decided. That was decided in the 1970s. Should we have a special assessment district? That's already been decided. That was in, decided in the 1970s. Should there be changes to that order? Should there be projects that require expenditures over $10,000? That's a decision that county boards make and take to the delegated authority to administer the day-to-day details of that. Once that happens and there is a project, and there definitely needs to be a project on the Elk Lake Dam for, to maintain the level set in the order, the delegated authority takes care of going through the project management of that, and then comes back to each of the county boards after hearings take place, and we can go through the statutory requirements for that, and ultimately ask for each county board to approve the assessment rule on computation of cost for those, and then assessments can be levied. So that's kind of how the process works. Delegated authority makes the day-to-day decisions. County boards make the big decisions. Circuit Court makes the not fun decisions of what the lake level should be and who's in and out of the special assessment district. I do this in about 60 different counties. This is one of my areas of expertise. Circuit Court judges love getting involved in these things. No, not at all. Where every riparian owner in a lake is invited to court to testify about what they individually think the level of a lake should be or who should be in the special assessment district. So if I, if I had to pick which one to be of those three entities, it would probably be you, but you do have some duties under this. So that's, that's kind of how the statute works with those three prongs. Okay. So, so the delegated authority, again, is the county boards appoint a delegated authority to take care of those day-to-day duties. Once you've decided on a lawyer and an engineer, going through, applying for grants, getting permits, property, you know, doing a lot of the community, communication, transparency issues, having a website, getting permits, making all the things happen to get to the point where we have a project, overseeing all the actions that are necessary to come up with an accurate special assessment district and take that to Circuit Court, once the county boards approve to do that. So that's the day-to-day operations directed by the county boards of commissioners. And so this slide kind of over, gives you an overview of all the things that I've been talking about, and you'll see in the resolution draft that we have before you, that there's a number of things that to, to update the order and to allow a few things to happen, we're requesting that this county board do. The Antrim County Board of Commissioners has already approved those actions. Calcaska, we met with them in their committee last week. We expect them to pass a resolution similar to the one before this, this Board of Commissioners this evening to make this all happen, because as I mentioned, we needed all three to move forward. So what is, once an order is established, so right now, we do have an established lake level for this chain of lakes. We have a special assessment district. These happened in the 70s before the updated Part 307 came into place. There needs to be some tweaks to them. And so we'll go through and kind of talk about why there needs to be some tweaks to the order. When an order for a lake level is set by a Circuit Court, the court has what's called continuing jurisdiction. That means it can open that old order back up and make revisions if it's deemed, if it's requested by the counties and deemed necessary by the court. So in this situation, and many situations, that have basically been brought to light after the dam breaks in Midland County, there are a number of things when going to do a dam project that we're looking at in a lake level order that we want to make sure is accurate. The first is the lake level. It is amazing to me when I look at these lake levels orders throughout the state of Michigan, where the legal level is set here, but the physical level is completely different than what's in the court order. We want to make sure that what's in the court order is the same as the physical level that's been operated or, or whatever is appropriate, and make sure that they are aligned. So if there is, whether it's a survey or error, or something happened 35 years ago that caused you to change how you're operating the dam, and you've been operating it at a different level, we need to get those back together. So that would be the one item. The second item is in 1988, engineers and surveyors started measuring the datum that's used for lake levels differently. Now they use what's called NAVD-88 instead of what was used prior to 88, which was NAVD-29 or mean sea level. So when we're opening an order, we don't open it up just because of this, but when we do, we want to update the datum that is being measured into modern-day datum. So it's a conversion similar to inches to centimeters. It's the exact same level. It's just measured in a different manner that is being used today. The third thing is making sure we have our seasonal levels correct, and if there needs to be seasonal levels for more than one of the chain of lakes. Right now, the current order has a winter and a summer level for the Elk Lake Dam. That may need to be revised. We need to look at that. It has specific dates in that. There may not be, need to be any changes, but that does need to be something to reviewed. And then I do heavily recommend that the special assessment language be revised, and I'll explain that to you in, in just a minute. It is the county's choice to have a special assessment district or not, but if there is not one, or it is not used, then it's a county general fund expense for the cost relating to, to the dams. I think Antrim County has been paying for many of the operation and maintenance of this dam through its county general fund expense through a dam fund, and not asking the other counties be part of that. But now that we're looking at a significant improvement project, we're going back to the order and the special assessment district to be able to do that. So kind of talked about the lake levels already. We have a measurement location. If there are different lakes impacted by the same structure, we want to make sure all of those lakes are included and get measurements for each of those lakes, too. Many of the counties are now using this system called Hi-Fi, where you can have digital measurements on each of the lakes that can be available on the county's website, so that all your riparian owners or anyone in the general public can check the level of your lakes, and then ensure that they're being, being operated in conformance with the lake level. So if you want to see what some of those look like, I know Roscommon County has that for Higgins and Horton Lake, and Lake St. Helen, there's a number of different counties that are, that are utilizing that and is helpful to the public. Seasonal levels, if there's a drawdown on this one, there is definitely a drawdown. We need to make sure that those effective dates are the correct effective dates. That's when the dam is being operated, if that also makes sense, given current environmental And that is important, because a drawdown normally would require, under Part 31 of NREPA, an annual permit to allow for a dam drawdown, unless there's an exemption in the administrative rules that allows for a drawdown without obtaining that. If Eagle finds that the drawdown will not cause adverse environmental impacts, and so we want to start looking at that to make sure that that is not the case. I know Eagle is starting to go through the state and going through all the historical lake level orders to see if they have any concerns with regard to that. And then the lake level variations, there was a court of appeals case, and then also some recent legislation talking about including variation levels. We recommend that those are in the court orders. The court orders say it needs to be at this level. There are some, been some property owners that take that to interpret, you should keep it that way, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all, all year long. And that's obviously impossible, given droughts, given rain events, et cetera, and so we want to include variation language in the order, so people better understand that those, that there is going to be some variations, weather dependent, season dependent with a lake level. And there was some legislation that was passed last year to deal with this issue, but we highly recommend that is included in the order as well. And then the special assessment district. In the, the lake level, inland lake level act allows for the special assessment district, so that it does not have to be a county general fund expense. This lake level does have a special assessment district, but it was done, I'm going to call it in a unique fashion. The lake, the district was combined, two different chains of lakes. The chain of lake involving intermediate lake, that has nothing to do with Grand Traverse County, and this chain of lakes into one special assessment district that included every property owner in Antrim County, and it didn't differentiate between the two lake level orders and the two dams. And so we need to clean that up, more than clean that up, we need to get that more accurate for each of, a special assessment district for each, each chain of lakes. And the districts historically would include, in many other lake levels, established lake levels across the state of Michigan, those properties that are on the lake or that have private deeded access to the lake. So as an example, if you live in a, in a subdivision and your plat gives you access to the lake, even though you're not a front lot owner, but you're a back lot owner that has access to the lake, those properties are normally included in a special assessment district. The current district does not have that outside of Antrim County. We would recommend in certain instances that they do. This is a special assessment levied to properties that benefit from that lake, and those properties that have some sort of deeded access to the lake, we would recommend be included in the special assessment district. We do not recommend that every parcel in the county be part of the special assessment district, and again, that's a cleanup that we need to make on Antrim County's part, at least. And then if a property does not have deeded access or direct access to the lake, we would recommend those not being included as well. And so without an accurate special assessment district, the counties can't assess the property owners. And there are allowances for counties and townships to be assessed at large, but that's, of course, up to the counties that are approving the special assessment rule. But one thing that is unique to Part 307, that's not in other special assessment district statutes, you can assess the DNR. Normally, the state of Michigan is exempt from special assessments, but not in Part 307. The DNR pays for their properties in a special assessment district. If you don't have a special assessment district, you're not getting monies from the DNR. Most of the lake levels that I'm involved in, Horton Lake, Higgins Lake, Indian Lake up in the UTP are a few examples, DNR is the biggest rate payer, is the biggest payer of the special assessment districts. So that's important to have an accurate special assessment district in place, so we can collect monies from the state of Michigan to help with the, with the water control structures. And so why are we coming to you now? Because we know that we need to do improvements to Elk Lake. This is not a project, process that happens overnight. This is the initiating part of cleaning up the process, so that we can ultimately get to a construction project. And so this resolution basically starts the process for us to work together to update the order and update the special assessment district, so then we can move forward with the engineering and to be able to accurately levy assessments for a project. So the first part of what you'll probably see us doing is after these, after all the counties have passed the resolutions, we're going to work to get an accurate special assessment district. That's a long and arduous process that luckily Leslie has agreed and has the blood to, to get going on and working with. It would involve working with the, each of the county's equalization departments, each of the, each of the townships' assessing departments to come up with. It's pretty easy to figure out what properties are on the lake, but those backlots that have private deeded access, or some sort of private easement that gives lake access. And so we're going to go, go through that process to figure that out, and then there is the intent to hold public meetings to allow the parties, the public to understand the process of how a special assessment district under Part 307 has been put together. Then, this is the unique part of this type of special assessment district, and I know your county has went through this in the last probably 10 years with Duck Lake specifically, is go to court to confirm the special assessment district or update that. So that's a Circuit Court action. This is the part that the courts love. Everyone in the district is invited to testify in a Circuit Court hearing, and then the Circuit Court judge decides who's in and who's out. So that takes a lot of information gathering to be able to notify everybody, to have correct information as to parcel data, to make sure that we have the right folks. And that doesn't, the court doesn't set how much everybody pays, just who's in and who's out. Then again, it goes back to the delegated authority for that fun work of coming up with a very specific special assessment methodology. Specifically for this, we have a number of lakes that lake levels are engineered, it's the same engineer you have for your MS4 discussions, Sean Middleton from Spicer Group, has been working with Antrim County on this. And he reports to us that the Elk Lake Water Control Structure actually controls the lake level for the chain of lakes listed on, on the screen. So all of the, the property owners on those lakes would be part of the special assessment district. You know, who pays how much is yet to be seen, but they would be proposed to be included. And of course, that includes a huge number of different townships. Only Whitewater Township in Grand Traverse County, but a significant number of townships, and therefore, a significant amount of coordination between municipal, municipalities. This lake level order, as your, your county administrator noted, was set in the 1970s. And then, again, we had the summer and winter levels, and it also included a special assessment district the next year. But again, as, as Leslie mentioned, both chain of lakes were handed to Antrim County and the respective, you know, other counties in '73, and as separate court orders, but the district court order, they just lumped everybody together and said, everybody pay for whatever needs to happen. That, that doesn't fly in today's world of special assessments, specifically under Part 307, so we need to, we need to clean that up. I wish it did, it would make it a lot easier, but that's not how the world of special assessments work. So we need to do some cleanups with regard to that, and, and separate that special assessment district between the two chain of lakes. Leslie talked about a little bit of the- Leslie talked about a little bit of the uniqueness of the Elk Rapids Dam. There are, it is a low hazard dam, so that makes some of the permitting issues easier. It is a FERC dam. Because it's a hydroelectric dam, that makes some of the permitting issues more difficult. So we'll be navigating through that process. And I say "we," I mean Leslie as the delegated authority, working in conjunction with the engineers to be able to do that. I know Sean Middleton is available. If this board has any specific questions about the condition of the dam or the spillway, that's an ancillary part of the dam, also under the jurisdiction of the three counties involved. But basically, we have a lot of updates. So I'm in here to clean, to clean up. On some of these orders, I feel like that Netflix show where the lady comes in and reorganizes all the closets. That's my job to come in and reorganize all the orders and update all the special assessment districts. So that's what I'm here to help you do. We want to make sure that all the counties agree. If they do indeed agree, that the Antrim County Drain Commissioner would serve as the delegated authority, that there does need to be some repairs. Update the lake level orders to include all the lakes. Clarify the measure locations for the legal lake levels. Make sure that they're accurate. Add the variation language and fix that special assessment district so that when it is time to do the construction, we're in legal conformance with Part 307, with Eagle requirements, and we have a good special assessment district to levy the cost to. So the next steps are included in the draft resolution, and I will be working with your civil counsel to ensure that the resolution language is acceptable to this board. But basically, it allows a few different things. One, to appoint the delegated authority. Two, to appoint legal counsel. To appoint an engineer. To appoint bond counsel. In this situation, that would be Dickinson Wright, who does a huge amount of lake level bonding issues. I've had dozens of projects with Dickinson Wright with regard to that. It allows us to go in and clean up the court order and to expend over $10,000 in doing so. And then the last is the catch-all. All the funds spent, once these resolutions are passed, are to be paid for by the levying of special assessments. That's a lot in a short period of time. Sorry, I wanted to make sure I went through it as quickly as possible so that I'm not taking too much more of your time at 11:15. But today is not, "Oh, it's over with. You'll never see us again." That's only part of your involvement. This is a long, multi-step process with each step having sub-steps that require a lot of public engagement, require a lot of permitting issues to take place, and specifically for the confirmation of an accurate special assessment district, a lot of research with regard to parcel data with the equalization departments and the assessors. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. That's very concise and quick, my favorite. Any questions, Commissioner Nelson?
Well, this is District 6 and your county's issue. I'm going to say this is not a big deal. This is a handful of big deals. So we have a resolution here. I hope I agree with everyone else here. This is, today is not the day to pass this. We've got to dig in and start doing some research here and figure out where to go and what to do. I absolutely appreciate the report. It was well done. It was concise. We've got some work to do.
I concur for, I believe we're going to, this fine gentleman to my right here to do a deep dive on it for us before we do anything else. Come on, Commissioner Andrews.
So I think I completely agree with Commissioner Nelson. And if I were in his shoes and this was my district getting assessed an unknown amount, I would have even more questions than the questions that I have, which are a lot. And I concur that we should direct this to legal counsel. One big picture question, and maybe this is a rhetorical question, but I understand the process. What I don't understand is, what is the project? What, I don't understand, are we perpetuating a hydroelectric dam? Are we talking about a run of the river? Are we, are we improving the environment? Are we just rebuilding what's there? I don't know if any of those things, that we're going to be better off, other than having funding source for whatever it is. But I don't know what it is. And I am not comfortable approving over $10,000, which is limitless, until I have a better understanding of what it is.
If I may? So what, under Part 307, this is where it becomes somewhat difficult to do that. So under Part 307, the county boards are responsible for operating and maintaining a lake level. And so there is already a responsibility of the county boards to do that. So ultimately, the special assessment district for a Part 307 lake level is in perpetuity. The county boards may choose to not utilize it and pay for costs out of the county's general funds or to utilize it, depending how they wish. So this is in anticipation of a significant project, but a lake level district basically reimburses the county boards of commissioners for the costs that are required to operate and maintain a lake level, whether that's the statutory required inspections for the water control structure that's in place, the operation and upkeep of that, an operation agreement if one is necessary, the monitoring data, et cetera. So those will all be expenses of a special assessment district, even if there wasn't a project. So like as in Duck Lake, that's already an established lake level in Grand Traverse County. When there are expenses that the county board doesn't want to have under its general expenses of the general fund, then those would be levied in assessment for those. In terms of this specific project, so this resolution does not approve a specific project. There will be other requirements and other resolutions that would be required to have that happen. This is the first resolution to open up the court order and get a more accurate special assessment district. So the cost to be levied to do the engineering, to answer more specifically your questions about what can and should be done with regard to the Elk Lake Dam can be answered. As you're aware, when we're dealing with something as complex as this and the permitting, the engineering hasn't even begun as to what the actual improvement project is going to be, so there is not a dollar amount. But the responsibilities of the three counties to operate and maintain the dam under the requirements of Eagle, to have a safe operation of that dam, are already in place because the lake level was already established.
May I ask a question?
Please.
So it says here that the original petitioner was Antrim County.
Yes.
So can Antrim County go back to the court and request to remove the order?
Yes, they could. There's not a dissolution, there's not language in the statute for the dissolution of a lake level. I have not personally seen that. It would require a court order to be able to do that. And I would think the court would have to find that there would be no reason to have an established lake level anymore in order to do that. And then I don't know whose responsibility the water control structure would be. So that would be maybe even more complicated than what I'm asking you to do, look at today.
Well, I just find it curious. And Leslie and I talked about this. Antrim County, back in 1970, did something in Antrim County Circuit Court. We now have 13th Circuit Court. And it's just, it's interesting to me that we're compelled to do something by a court order from 1970 in the Antrim County Court.
Yeah. And so when there's an inter-county lake, one circuit court is determined. It's not multiple court actions in each of the counties. I would have to go back to the 1970s file, if there is such a thing. But I would imagine all three county boards of commissioners would have to be on board to that. You can't levy assessments in three counties.
There is a resolution out there for all three counties.
Okay.
In 1973, when this happened.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
We've looked. We just, we haven't.
Nobody can.
Yeah.
But it's, from what I understand and what I've read.
Commissioner Walter?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, just to simplify, there's an issue with the Elk Lake Dam. That's the whole thing, right? We don't really know how much it'll cost to fix it or redo it. But in the process of pursuing a fix or redo of some kind, we unearthed all these other things that we need to clean up. And we kind of knew they were there. And right now, everybody's being assessed, but under the new, everybody in Antrim County is being assessed, but under the new approach, which is more appropriate, just the riparian owners will be assessed. And so that's a lot fewer people. And so, am I getting this summary right?
You're getting it pretty close. So nobody's been assessed for 30 years. Okay. Nobody's been assessed for 30 years. And so...
So there's really no money that's been accumulating to fix a very expensive fix.
Other than Antrim County saving some of their general fund money aside to do that for minor things, but now we're to the point where, we're past the design life of a structure that needs some more costly things, and now we need to go back and look at how this was set up and make sure that is a appropriate moving framework.
Okay. So nobody has been getting an assessment, and now it's proposed through all of this that the riparian owners will be getting an assessment that they never have gotten in the past. Is that correct?
So, not for 30 years, yes. So if you've owned, if you bought your house 25 years ago, you've not seen an assessment for the Part 307 lake level, because there probably hasn't been such significant repairs that were necessary. But it's, the district is there, like we said, it's just not in good shape. It needs to be resurrected to pay for the upcoming improvements. And if it's not, then the three counties will have to fight it out, how it's going to be split amongst the three counties if that doesn't happen, which I hope does happen because it's not an insignificant expense.
So those are kind of the choices, either the three counties go in on it together and decide, "Oh, we'll just pay it from our general fund from this money we don't have," or "We will agree to a special assessment on the riparian owners that will hopefully help fund this very expensive unknown project."
Right. So again, so let me tell you this. So let's say there's 300 properties in Grand Traverse County.
375 we've identified thus far.
Okay. Let's say there's 375 properties in Grand Traverse County. When it comes time for the project, obviously, even if we set up the special assessment district and we say, "Grand Traverse County can decide to pay that portion of," that would be Grand Traverse County's share, and not assess it, it could come out of the county's general funds, that's your decision to make at the time. I think each county can make that decision at the time, how they want to deal with that, but it would be shared. And it is unfortunate, I do not, my job dealing with the drain code and lake levels, I get to say this all the time, I wish I could come to you and tell you, "Before you set up the special assessment district, this is exactly how much it's going to cost." I can't. All I do know is that you have jurisdiction over it, you have the responsibility to maintain and operate it. We know under law, if you don't do it voluntarily, you're probably going to be told by Eagle to do it. And so we're trying to get ahead of that by cleaning up the court order before all of that comes down, because it takes such a long time to get an accurate special assessment district to allow these things to happen, that when it does come time that the construction takes place, we're in good shape.
Another question. It seems like the fact that this is a hydropower dam is limiting its opportunity to get grant funding, but it's not serving much of a hydropower function. Is it possible to decommission it as a hydro so that it then becomes eligible for grant funding the way the Bel Air Dam did?
I can't answer that without help from the engineers, and I don't know if they're prepared for it or if they're even still on this call. What I do know is, is that I want everybody to know, it's not the hydro dam itself that there are issues. It is the overflow spillway that is adjacent to it, where the waters that helped to drain Elk and Skegmoog and Torch and Bel Air and Clam after big flooding events. So that's the part that the problem is. So I don't want to scare anybody that the big building itself is bad. What will it take? I can't answer that, but I can get you that answer.
Thank you. I'm going to make the motion to direct legal counsel to investigate and bring recommendations back to this board regarding this issue.
I'll support.
All right. We have a motion. My Commissioner Andrews will support. My Commissioner Hensel. Comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Hensel?
I'm sorry, I just haven't had a chance to ask yet. I see a significant portion of this lake level affects DNR land and also some township land. Can you help us understand how they would contribute to a special assessment?
Sure. That's a great question. So ultimately, the delegated authority will decide assessment methodology, so I can just give you some analogies. So under most special assessment laws, county-owned, you know, government-owned properties are exempt, not under Part 307. So when we're looking at a special assessment methodology, and again, I'm just going to give you some examples. I'm not saying, "Don't go to breakfast tomorrow morning and say, 'This is how it's going to be done on this one week.'" That's years from now to decide, or a little while to decide. If the DNR has a state park and a boat launch, then we're going to look at the number, the intensity of the use. So if it's DNR land that's vacant and recreational land with no improvements on it, no campsite, no public beaches, et cetera, that's going to be assessed different than DNR land that has a public boat launch, state park beaches, campsites, et cetera. So in Houghton Lake, they counted the parking spaces for public boat launches and assessed either county, township, or the DNR based on the intensity of use for that. Parking spaces for county parks or state parks might be looked at. If there's campsites, the number of campsites. If there's hotels, the number of hotel rooms, et cetera. If there's marinas, the number of slips, to look at the intensity of the use by a specific parcel within the special assessment district.
So you're saying that, in essence, the counties and their designees get to choose how much we charge the state of Michigan?
Yes.
I like that. I have some thoughts on that.
Yes.
Write those down for us for later, Commissioner Hensel. Any more comments, questions? I have a quick question, but you look like you're ready to say something. So you said there's 300, correct me, 375 properties that are in Grand Traverse County that are part of this. What's the percentage of Grand Traverse County properties that are there versus everybody else?
Less than 10%.
Or less than 10%? That's the one I wanted to know. Any more comments or questions? Thank you for that, by the way. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today and your willingness to accommodate us.
I don't know if it's thank you or, oh, boy.
Takes a lot of courage to come here and say, "Hey, give me some money." Oh, let's see, we are now on to 12, Commissioner Department Reports. Let's start with Commissioner Hensel. Got anything?
Hey, Fair Week's over, Old Engine Show is over. Great turnouts at both events. That's about it.
Perfect. I concur. Commissioner Spence?
Nothing to share. Thank you.
Commissioner Flynn?
Nothing to share, just want to double-check on ad hoc to, or the committee to interview for Beta. I know I did see a doodle poll come through. I have not seen if that has come to fruition. I'm sure it did not, but I have not seen another one.
I can ask Lisa to send another one. I don't think there was a lot of response, so I think we should wrap back around on that.
Oh, I love doodle polls. Lisa loves them more, I think.
There's been so many.
We can do it by phone call, or we could have her come down now and we can pick a name.
Well, I think one of our members is not here today to make that decision. We don't all need to sit around while people are figuring out a date. I'd be happy to figure out the three of us on our own.
Well, I'll make sure.
We can figure it out and let Lisa know.
Commissioner Walter?
Nothing to share today.
Commissioner Nelson?
Horror Show is still going on. Still have opportunities to get back out there right after Labor Day.
What, when does that terminate?
December 20, excuse me, September 23rd. There's a bit of a hiatus right now, starting back up, I think, the 1st of September.
Sweet, because I want to make sure I get back out there. It's a wonderful place. Commissioner Morris?
Nothing to share.
Commissioner Andrews?
Nothing for the group.
Nothing for the group.
All right, I have a couple of things I'm going to do, not really a report, but I'm going to do a shout-out before we continue on, our staff. Former Senator Jason Allen has been appointed as a senior advisor for the Office of Partnerships and Public Engagement by President Trump. That's great, because he does a lot of advocacy for our group. And also, in our last month, we had a tragic incident in Walmart, and I had said this before, and I want to reiterate that, and I've been reached out to by leaders countrywide, often our support. I received a nice letter from U.S. Senator Alyssa Slotkin, saying, giving her support and thanking us for all of our staff, emergency response people and the job that they've done. I wanted to share that and say thank you for reaching out to us. And other than that, Mr. Elger?
We have a request to the Board of Commissioners to have some type of a fall event with our staff and a barbecue of some sort. We have two dates that are kind of rising to the top. One, I think, was September 16th, and the other was October 3rd, which is a Friday. If we want to do that, we should start planning for that. I think that staff has requested that they have some type of a fall event with the Board of Commissioners, which is great, great to hear. We've done it in the past. We've done it at the basement of the Gov. Center, out in front by the river. We've also done it elsewhere. But just wanting to put those two dates on your radar, which is best, which.
Sadly, I already have some dates in October planned, but I know October 3rd, I'll be volunteering at building tomorrow with NMC and the skilled trade, helping high schoolers with skilled trades.
And you won't be flipping burgers?
I will not be flipping burgers. I might be welding or doing something like that.
That could be cool. It might be that way. Any other thoughts on that?
Both are available for me, and I'll volunteer to man the grill.
As will I. I'm good with either. So as a reminder, can't speak at the 16th, but 10:03 is at the tail end of the MAC Conference. And so I know a lot of you are interested in attending, if not all of us. And so we're going to have a busy schedule that week, and that ends the 2nd. I suspect that we probably will not have a meeting that week because of that.
My preference would be September 16th. It sounds like that would work for Commissioner Flynn's schedule and others who are participating in that event.
Great.
I was thinking about this, too. Are we going to reach out to other elected officials to suggest that they help us serve food?
We would do all of that, yes. We just wanted to have a date certain that we could start planning for.
And what time typically?
We would probably noon forward. And I guess I would, we'll come back to the board to discuss this more in depth, but could we close certain buildings to accommodate staff? And those that can close, I guess, for a lunch period or extended lunch period, we would certainly want to consider that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And also, September 10th is a Wednesday that would be a study session. That is the follow-up event for decolor, lost the name of it, the commissioner facilitated exercise that we had back in July.
Being Penny's loving?
Yeah. That is on the 10th.
I'll be unable to attend that one as well. I missed the first one. I'll be returning for my son's wedding.
Very busy wedding.
Getting married off, man, grandkids.
Make those babies.
Yeah. When I said publicly, grandkids.
Wow.
Can I make a resolution?
Is that it? Good to Mr. Forsyth.
Yeah, we've targeted September 2nd, September 2nd, Tuesday, to open up applications for the marijuana funds. So we're building out a dedicated webpage right now. We're fine-tuning the application instructions. We're doing targeted outreach to partners and other community organizations. And so September 2nd, we'll open up that application process.
The news picked that up pretty heavily. They had a lot of interest in that, so we were able to get some good traction with publicity.
Will there be a link to that right on the admin page, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you make sure to send us all an email? I know many of us have been communicating with community partners about when that's going to come available, and the sooner we know it's live, the better, if possible. Not to add too many to-dos to anybody's list, but that's a big one in the community. Thank you.
That's good news. Good news. Mr. Ba, do you have any more to share today? Mr. Gudman?
October 3rd is my birthday, if you guys want to.
We'll get you an extra burger. I'll get you a crown. You get to be king. That's how it's cracked up to be, believe me. So that'll be all. Second public comment?
Declan Andrews, East Bay Township. I have no script. I just took some notes and I have some thoughts I'd love to share with you while I was sitting here. Three points specifically. In today's world, fast-paced growth, construction, expansion, everyone needs time to slow down. You're spending millions, you're being asked for millions, you know, to spend on this growth and expansion. Today's presentation for Munson is what put this in my head. $5 million you allocated to a mental health center. That's awesome. Sorely needed. You're building a jail, not just a jail. I watched your meeting. I heard one consistent theme from all of you throughout that meeting. Mental health facility or considerations. That's huge. Mental health system. The world has awoken to the need and focus on mental health. That brings me to quiet recreation for youths, adults, the elderly, your soon-to-be grandchildren. The world needs more space to decompress, exercise mental or mindfulness techniques. You have the space. It's quiet. The city has the space. It's quiet. To keep it that way will cost you nothing. Not a dime. But look, by keeping it quiet, look what each one of you sitting at this table contribute to the mental health of the Grand Travers County taxpayers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else for second public comment? Going once, going twice, third time's a charm. There are no other notices, and thankfully, no closed sessions. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day.